All right, let's get started. Hello, welcome to the League of Women Voters and Forward Janesville's Janesville City Council Candidates Forums. We're very delighted to have you here in the audience and we also welcome our guests who are watching at home tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank JE TV for their amazing help and the high-quality filming that they do to make this event happen. Also wanted to thank Forward Janesville for partnering with us on this candidates forum. So my name is Laura Peterson. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Janesville and I'm a moderator for the forum tonight. The all-volunteer Local League of Women Voters of Janesville is a nonpartisan organization. We work to register voters, host candidate forums, study local, state, and national issues, and to bring informative programs to the citizens of Janesville and Northern Rock County. Visit our website at www.lwvjvl.org or follow us on Facebook and Twitter, we've gotten into the modern ages, to get involved and to stay informed. For the first time this year in 2020, the Janesville League is posting a voter's guide to local elections on vote411.org. It's not quite ready to go yet, but it will be within the next few days. So the League of Women Voters Education Fund's National Voter Information Platform is the vote411.org. So this website will let you see who and what issues are on your ballot and you'll be able to read candidates' responses to questions posed by the league in the candidates' own words. In this one-stop-shopping site, you'll be able to read responses of candidates running in contested local races. And so that'll be the Janesville City Council and any of the contested Rock County Candidates' Board of Supervisors races, as well as the responses of the candidates running for the Wisconsin Supreme Court and candidates running in the presidential primary elections. You will be able to find links to video recordings of candidate debates and forums through vote411.org. We're really excited about this new option. It's existed for a while, but this is the first time that we are going to have local information available on the website. So as always, the league does not support or oppose any candidates or party, and we strive to provide accurate and unbiased information consistent with our mission: empowering voters, defending democracy. So let's shift our focus to our forum here tonight. Candidates have not received the questions in advance, and they will take turns being the first to answer the questions. Candidates will have one minute to respond to questions. We time the responses in order to give each candidate an equal opportunity to be heard and to try to cover as many topics as possible tonight. So we have four candidates running for three open seats for the Janesville City Council. The election will be held Tuesday, April 7th. So I'll introduce you to our candidates, and then the first thing we'll do is we'll get to hear an opening statement from each candidate, and they will have one minute each to give their opening statement. So our candidates tonight are Paul Benson, Rich Gruber, Susan Johnson, and Paul Williams. So we will start with Paul. You will have one minute to give your opening statement.
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and Forward Janesville for putting on this debate, and thank my wife, my parents, who came out here to support me, and also the voter registration folks who are here registering voters. I think that's super important, so if you're watching somewhere else and you want to register to vote, come on down and make sure you're registered before April. I'm also honored to be up here with the three other very worthy candidates who are running. A little bit of an introduction about myself. I was born and raised in Janesville. I graduated not from Craig or Parker, but from Oak Hill Christian School. My mom was a third and fourth grade teacher there, and I graduated from there in 2004. I ended up pursuing my bachelor's degree at Silver Lake College in northeastern Wisconsin. I went there on a basketball scholarship, and then went to Arizona for law school, Arizona State University. I stayed to practice there for 10 years and then missed my hometown. I really wanted to move back, so we moved back in 2017, and I decided to get involved in local politics and applied for the open council seat. I've been on the council for one year, but have not yet been elected. So why am I running? Number one is to give young families a voice on the council. Two is to try to keep the momentum that we have moving forward, and third is to try to make Janesville the best city that we can be. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Rich?
Thank you. My name is Richard Gruber. I'm in my fifth year in the Janesville City Council. I, like Paul, was first appointed a number of years back, and I've been fortunate to have been successful in two previous elections. My background is primarily in the healthcare industry. I'm a retired executive for Mercy Health System. Prior to that, I spent roughly 30 years in various management positions in local governments across the Midwest and in the Far West. Been in Janesville for over 20 years. From the first day I arrived in Janesville, I fell in love with the community. It's just the exact right size for my family, for myself, and I've been committed to community service since the very beginning. And if you look at the long list of those community service activities, you'll see that I've touched a lot of lives in a positive way. I'm excited and thankful for the opportunity to represent the city as a whole and look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Susan?
I also want to thank the League of Women Voters and Forward Janesville for holding our forum, because this is how democracy can work, by being informed of what's happening and who the candidates are. I'm originally from Kenosha, Wisconsin. I've lived in the state of Wisconsin for nearly 50 years. I came to Janesville in 2005, so I've been here for 15 years. I am active on the Sustainable Janesville Committee, and I'm active with the League of Women Voters and the Green Rack Autobots. I want to make a difference, that's why I'm running. A vote for me will be a vote for change. Thank you.
My name is Paul Williams. I first got on the council in 2000, got off in 2008, took a little break, got back on in 2016, so I'm now finishing out my 12th year on the council. I'm married to Mary, and I have two sons, two stepsons, and six grandkids. I'm a lifelong resident of Janesville, and one of the reasons I want to stay on the council is I want to continue with overseeing the redevelopment of the Rock River area and, of course, the redevelopment of the GM Jatco property and help continue the revitalization of downtown through the Arise program. That's why I'm running again for council. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, we are now going to begin the question and answer portion of the program. So as a reminder again, you'll have one minute to respond to questions. Richard, you'll get the first question tonight. So what do you feel are the top three issues facing the city of Janesville?
Thank you. The top three issues facing the city of Janesville could be really summed in one statement, and that is being able to sustain the progress that's been made over the course of the last five years. The city is under intense pressure from the state of Wisconsin as it relates to our ability to provide revenue, to support the services that the city provides across the board. My priorities are public safety, police, fire, and EMS, followed very closely by having a sound infrastructure support program, which we have now with a roads program that has doubled in size from the day I took office till now. We've made substantial reinvestments in our water and sewer systems, and frankly, we're doing an incredible job of economic development across our community. We're on a boom, and frankly, it is because of that boom that I'd like to stay for another term and hopefully be a part of that success.
Thank you. Susan?
Certainly, budget is a huge issue. Our budget is very tight. Our expenditures are always rising and our revenues are not. The biggest part of our revenue is property taxes, and unfortunately, within the state of Wisconsin, the residents really absorb the tax base, unfortunately. Part of it is the dark hole, the dark store loophole, and certainly, one thing I would encourage people to do would be to get involved, not only with the city, but with the state of Wisconsin, to make sure that commercial properties step up to the plate. I think we still have problems with encouraging more family-supportive jobs and getting more affordable housing.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Paul?
The restrictions put on the local level by the state, especially with not getting our fair share of state revenues back is what the city of Janesville should be getting, and they certainly haven't fixed that formula, and that's one thing that's really restricting us in Janesville. And also, there are restrictions on how much we can -- restrictions on spending every year. The other is a twofold problem, and that's our growing business here in Janesville with good-paying jobs, but it's kind of a two-edged sword, because when we get more people coming here to work, we're finding that our lack of housing, and that's one thing that we're dealing with now, is providing more housing for the workers coming to Janesville.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Paul?
The three biggest issues that I see are, number one, are how are we going to attract and keep young talent. The state of Wisconsin and Rock County are both huge talent exporters. We do not keep our college graduates here. So how do we figure out how to do that? I think it's going to be a multi-pronged approach, and part of that's going to be a really vibrant downtown, and I think we're succeeding on that front. Second is what council member Williams mentioned was the state shared revenue. 2019, the city of Janesville got $5.8 million back from the state of Wisconsin for comparison. Beloit got $16.8 million. Racine received $27 million. So our general fund balance budget is $53 million. So if you can imagine what we could do with 10 or 15 million more dollars. And then third is going to be finding a way to pay for our roads. We started doing a new road program of 12 miles a year, and honestly, at current inflation, we're not going to be able to afford it. So how can we figure out how to keep fixing our roads and pay for it in a responsible way?
All right. Thank you, Paul. All right, Susan, this will be your question next. I'll ask you to move the microphone right in front of you so we can make sure to hear you.
Absolutely.
All right. Just make sure it project well.
Yes.
All right. So the question will be, how will the city, Janesville City Council, benefit from you being a member?
It will benefit from me being a member because I am very engaged with the community. I believe that we need to encourage community engagement in every aspect of the city's business. Yeah, community engagement. We have to know what the right hand has to know, what the left hand is doing, and so forth, and in order to make the best decisions, people have to come together and really speak their minds, and we have to listen. We are really starting to have more of that, more public hearings and so forth, but I think we need to encourage that even more and have more education outreach about those public hearing opportunities so that people know that they should come and speak their minds.
Thank you, Susan. Paul?
I think they'll, from my experience on the council, my 12 years, my expertise, I've been involved in many of the different committees outside of just the city council. I think they have found over the 12 years that I've already been on that I do my due diligence on research and listening to citizens, so that's why I feel that the citizens of Janesville will benefit from me being back on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Paul?
Let me use the mic. I think the reasons that I would be a good reelection candidate on the council are, number one, I give a voice for young families. I'm the only person with a young family on the city council, and while I appreciate the experience of the other council members, I think it's important to have a voice for people who know what it's like to raise kids in 2020 and going forward. Number two, I'm a small business owner, and I own a business in our downtown, and I have an employee who works for me in our downtown. So I have a front-row seat for these downtown improvements and how they affect local downtown businesses and business owners. And third, I think I approach the city's issues in a pragmatic, problem-solving way. I'm not an ideologue. I'm not focused on making sure that I'm right on, or finding the left or right side, but trying to find the right solution.
Thank you, Paul. Richard?
Thank you. I believe that I bring a certain level of experience to the job as city council member that is unique, inasmuch as, while I've served on the council for five years, a great deal of my professional background is in the realm of municipal government and municipal services. To understand the nuts and bolts and the intricacies of a very complex organization, $111 million operating budget for the city of Janesville, more than 500 employees, nearly $45 million worth of capital expenditures in a separate budget, multiple funds that are a whole lot different than trying to manage your monies at home, as all of us do, is a complex job. And I have the time, the talent, and the energy to do it, and most importantly, I have a rule of thumb that says, God gave me two ears and one mouth, and I want to use them in that proportion. I listen, and I listen well, and I've proven to be a voice of reason.
Thank you. All right. Paul, you're going to be the first one to answer this question. So we often focus on the challenges facing the city, but what do you think is going well right now in the city of Janesville?
Well, there are a lot of things that are going well in the city of Janesville right now. We're seeing a lot of new buildings going up, both residential and commercial, several developments going on. I think if you drive around town, you'll see a lot of construction and cement mixers delivering daily, and the interstate's being improved. And then with companies like Shine looking at Janesville and coming to Janesville, that's very exciting to see, a company that's developing a product that's needed worldwide in the healthcare that only this area is going to be able to provide in the near future, and they picked Janesville. So there are a lot of good things going in Janesville.
Great. Thank you. Paul?
First, I would say is our success on the multifamily housing efforts. We had the Housing Summit back in, I think, 2018, and out of that now in the past couple, and I guess just all in this year, we have now seen three projects get approved by the council and start at work that I think are going to amount to 500 multifamily units. That's going to be huge for our city's employers and for the young families in the city. Number two, I think the indoor sports complex, the progress that we have made on that project, and it's not a done deal yet by any means, but the progress that we have made to fill that very important gap in this city, I think should be applauded, and I hope that we can get that project done. And then third and finally, how we've attacked and tried to really help people who are homeless in the city. I've been really impressed by the partnership between our local nonprofit organizations and city staff. We're lucky to have a lot of people on the fourth floor who really care about people who are homeless, so I think our success is on that front.
Thank you, Paul. Richard?
Thank you. There's a lot in Janesville that you can see that demonstrates that we are in fact booming, and there's a lot of Janesville that you can't see that also would demonstrate that we are booming. The obvious things, you see the downtown revitalization going on. You see the new Shine project, among others, that are bringing new jobs, high-paying jobs, professional jobs to the community. You see the response that the city has made. We've approved three multifamily housing projects within the last six months that'll bring 500-plus new units of housing to a community that desperately needs additional housing. The unseen things that I think are very important, and I have to compliment the city manager because he captured it best when he said Janesville is booming, and the reason we are booming is we're probably in the best position financially this city has been in the last 15 years. And that's a direct product of the hard work that's been made by the council to take those tough decisions and allocate dollars appropriately and effectively to make sure we can be sustainable, and that's what it's really all about.
Thank you. Susan?
Certainly, the new housing units are very welcome, and that is one of the biggest signs of progress in the city. Also, I also really like the project about the indoor sports complex as well. I think that's really essential for our young people to have opportunities like that and to grow and develop their minds, their bodies, everything, in a positive way. So that's all good, but there's still a lot of work to be done. Even with the 500 housing units, they're not all affordable, and lots of people coming in are younger, and they don't have a big wad of money to put down for a mortgage. So I think affordable housing is still a big issue. Another really great thing that is improving is there is more connection between the city and the community. That is just starting, though, so I think there's a lot of room for growth in that area. And if you want to ask me later what I mean by that, I'd be happy to explain.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Our audience has been invited to submit questions, so I'll be sprinkling some of the audience questions in, and here's one of them for tonight. So Paul, this one is for you. How will you help representation of people on the south side in the fourth ward, especially regarding the food desert?
So first, I think is just listening to them. I had the opportunity to go to the Fourth Ward Community Action Meeting last week hosted at, oh, I can't remember the name of Father Earl's church, but the church down in the fourth ward, and I was able to just listen and hear to their issues. So I think that's a big thing, is just listen to these people. As far as picking specific neighborhoods for assistance, I don't think that that is necessarily a great strategy. I think what we need to do is focus on a whole-city approach. We're called the common council for a reason. We don't represent districts or wards. We represent the whole city. So I think if we keep investing in making the city the most livable place we can, a rising tide is going to raise all ships, and I think that all the neighborhoods in the city, including the south side and the fourth ward, will see improvement from that. As far as the food desert, I believe that our Economic Development Director is working on that, but again, I do not think it's the city's role to necessarily give tax incentives to a grocery store, because if I owned Festival Foods or Woodman's and I was competing against a city-subsidized grocery store, I wouldn't think that's very fair.
Thank you. Richard?
Thank you. I'm very proud of the fact that this is a city with a common council, and the job that you are electing individuals to serve is one that represents the community as a whole. And that takes a lot of the politics out of the conversation. I hear the phrase "food desert" quite often, and quite honestly, I'm concerned that we now have a food desert on the east side with the closing recently of Mauer's Market. There's now a similar circumstance there. It's not something the city can solve, however, just by, when one fails, providing incentives to bring a grocery store in. The key is listen first and then act. Probably the most exciting project that the city has going at this moment in time, which will have a dramatic effect on the community as a whole, is the redevelopment of the Centennial Industrial Park, the former GM plant. That is going to be that project that literally will raise all boats in the water, and if we can do that project correctly, do it effectively, then we're going to see an additional boom happen in this community that'll be unmatched, unparalleled.
Sure. Thank you. Susan?
One thing that this city is not doing as well as it might to help solve this issue, which it is an issue, and I think we do need to focus ourselves on our weaker areas to lift everyone up, that's how you lift everyone up, is working on the weaker areas, is to work much more closely with the county and with other entities. For instance, the county now is moving into the old Pick 'N Save building. I have the wonderful idea, and I think other people have also had that idea, that part of that building might be used as a grocery store, even a small one, a fresh farmer's market year-round. The city of Madison does similar things, and we can do that too if we work closer together with county and other entities.
Thank you. Paul?
I guess dealing with the food desert around the south side of town, it's been brought up before, that, you know, it's really not a city's role to subsidize that type of a business for just the south side. I had an interesting conversation in my job. I had to pick some people up at a grocery store here that had broke down and tow their car back to Jefferson, and they said they come to Janesville once a week to do their grocery shopping, because there's no grocery stores up in that area, and this is the best one that they can find. So they drive all the way down from Jefferson to come to this side, to Janesville, to the grocery shop. Yes, it would be nice to have some different, possibly not a large grocery store on the south side, but some smaller ones, and I think that's happening. There's even now becoming delivery services from different grocery stores are doing that. But to subsidize a grocery store with tax money, I don't feel is something that the city should do. And getting to the part of the question, you know, I think the representation citywide is best for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard, this will be your question first. Are there innovative programs that have been implemented in neighboring communities that you would like to see happen in Janesville?
There's been a variety of different programs, innovative programs, that have in fact been birthed in other communities that we have brought to Janesville, and we've made every attempt to develop it. The interesting thing is the downtown redevelopment project, the Arise project, is frankly, the catalyst for it is coming from an extensive amount of research and effort to review what other communities have done across not only Wisconsin, but across the Midwest, looking for successes and looking for failures. And much of the strategy that's been employed in making the downtown redevelopment work has been a strategy that's been based on the successes in other communities. We make some very targeted reinvestment that in fact is critical and going to continue to be critical to the success of those programs. One of the areas where Janesville in fact has been exporting some of that expertise is in the area of our use of tax increment financing districts, and we've taken a very proactive approach that frankly is a model that the other communities in the state are looking to and saying, "We want to learn how you do it and do it so well."
Thank you. Susan?
There is a great potential in the green tier legacy community network, and this is something I know very intimately about because I'm on the Sustainable Janesville Committee. I've attended the state meetings for the green tier. It is part of the DNR, and it's been in existence since 2012. And we became part of it when the council voted for it just this past October, 2019. So the potential here is that with meeting with all of these cities and counties that are members, there is so much information sharing, resource sharing, and information about grants and things to bring in from the outside, and that is something that I think we need to keep doing more and more. That's really such great potential. I can't talk about it enough.
Thank you, Susan. Paul?
Could you repeat the question?
Of course. If I can find it. Hold on. Are there innovative programs that have been implemented in neighboring communities that you would like to see happen in Janesville?
None that I can think of at this time. If there were, I would have probably brought them forward. One thing that is coming forward today was announced that Janesville is getting three opportunity zones. That was brought forward by Representative Colstein, got approved, and one is going to be for GM sites, Shine, and for Arise. So this is a new tool in our toolbox to help, just like TIPS have helped, and I think other communities will be looking towards Janesville and how we do this, and I believe it's going to do something that will really help redevelop those properties. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Susan, this will be your question first. Or no?
Can I answer that one?
No. No, of course you can. That's why it didn't look quite right.
I would like to see us look into whether we can create an entertainment district as designated by the state with the indoor sports complex, because that would do two things for us. Number one, it would open us up to additional sources of outside funding, and then number two, it would let us capture And then number two, it would let us capture some of those tax dollars that leave at the local level. So that would make building this indoor sports complex a lot more feasible if we could somehow join the likes of Madison and Milwaukee and get a part of our city designated as an entertainment district.
Sorry about that, Paul. Thank you. All right. Susan, now you will get the next question. This is another one from our audience. Could you encourage housing developers to accept tenants who receive Section 8 rental assistance?
Yes. I'm not sure I understand what else is needed here. What?
That could be your answer if you so choose.
Can? Yes.
Okay.
I was asking that question because I was trying to get at, how can we problem-solve better here? And what I was thinking is, I know that the developer was wild about taking Section 8 and putting that in that project on Racine Street. However, what if they looked at taking a very small number of tenants and tried to analyze how that was working, and both moderate and lower income, to see if it's a good adjustment? Maybe it would work, maybe it won't.
All right. I appreciate the clarification, and so with that clarification, we'll go ahead and start your time over again.
Okay. With that clarification, yes. I really back this. I like the fact that the River Flats Apartments have 92 affordable units, and this will be affordable for the next 30 years, which is wonderful. But we need much, much more of that. And that, what you just described is a way to do that. And I think that's essential, because, I mean, building costs are going up and up, and with developers, you know, wanting more and more profits, and their own costs are going up, we do need a way. There has to be a way to encourage developers to build some more additional affordable units. It just has to happen. I mean, we just have too many people without, going without.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Paul?
Well, yes, I just voted in favor of the new project downtown by the police department, which is going to have that, so my answer would be yes.
Okay. Thank you. Paul?
My answer is similar to Councilmember Williams. Yeah, I also supported the River Flats project. I guess we can just hope to, that if that project is successful, that we'll see another project of that type. I do know that there are more and more landlords signing up under the Section 8 program, because I think our inventory continues to increase when we get city updates. So, yeah, of course, I would encourage any landlords and developers who are able to accept Section 8.
Thank you.
I made mention of the fact that we've been very successful with our strategy that we employ using tax increment financing districts. One of the first times, in fact, the first time, that the city of Janesville has taken advantage of a particular provision within the tax increment financing law just occurred, where we were able to capture a full year's tax increment from a district that we were going to close. We did it by keeping it open for one additional year. We took those dollars, and we used those dollars to invest into the River Flats program. That particular project is a beneficiary of the successful strategy that we've used with tax increment financing districts. What the city's role can be in Section 8 housing, along with a whole host of other programs through CDBG, is simplify and educate. The biggest hurdle I have heard, as I talk to landlords across this community, is the red tape is incredible. And if we can somehow educate and work with them to cut through the tape, we'll make life a whole lot easier and much more successful, as long as we continue to take advantage of the tools we have available to us.
All right. Thank you. All right. You're going to have the, if I just say Paul, it seems a little confusing. All right. So oftentimes, you're going to be faced with something that you may not be familiar with. And so, when you are faced with a decision about a subject that you are unfamiliar with, how do you prepare yourself to participate meaningfully in that decision?
A lot of research and a lot of listening. And again, it depends on the subject, but, you know, we get the agenda on a Wednesday for a Monday night, but we're also privy to things that are going to be coming up on the agenda, sometimes weeks, months in advance. So, you have a lot of time to do research, and it certainly, you can't just rely on just sitting back and trying to go off of experience. You have to look at other communities that have maybe dealt with the issue, and just from your experience, but certainly from listening to the citizens.
Great. Thank you. Paul?
My answer is similar, that you need to research and listen and pick up the phone. But I will add that we're lucky to have the staff that we do in the city manager's office. So on, just to kind of educate the community on every agenda item, city staff provides us with a very well-researched memo on each item, that they try not to say which one, they try to give us pros and cons, and give us an unbiased memo on basically every issue. And sometimes, and these are 15, 20, 30-page memos with materials that we have for us to be able to review, to make sure that we are educated on the issues that come before us. So that's part of what you're paying for. When you see the administrative costs on your, in the city's budget, that's part of what you're paying for, is that city staff time to give us those research memos.
Thank you, Paul. Richard?
I think that that probably occurs more often than we're willing to admit. We run into something that we hadn't seen before and hadn't experienced before. My rule of thumb is get on the phone and talk to people who have been there, done it, and have learned some lessons from it, in the hopes that I can avoid whatever mistakes they made, because frankly, there isn't enough time in life to make all those mistakes yourself. I try to be extremely well-connected with those helping agencies that are out there, whether it be the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, whether it be the National Mayor's Association, whether it be the International City County Managers Association, and a host of other experts in the field who can provide us with best practices that we can then mold into our community's particular needs. The important thing is to be willing to say, "I don't know the answer," and then be honest and go forward and try and find that answer, and put the energy and time in to get the job done.
Thank you. Susan?
Yes, this topic is very close to my heart, because I've done a lot of research and preparation for tonight. So I will tell you what I have done. I thoroughly looked at the city website. The city website is just a plethora of information. So, please look at it if you haven't done so. It had the 2020 budget on, all of that information was there. Also, I go outside of the city. I ask, I ask people in our community, very, you know, people from all backgrounds, all different parts of the spectrum. And also, I just do research. I have done a lot of research in my life, in my past lives, and that's really how I get my information.
Thank you, Susan. All right. Paul, this will be your question first. How can you, as a city council member, encourage city programming and services that reflect the diversity of the residents here in Janesville?
Well, we have an opportunity every year. Our budget review process is almost a six-month process at this point. It started basically as soon as I got on the council. So that's where we have a chance to meet with each one of the directors of each department in the city and talk with them about the programming. We each serve on two or three committees as well. So in those committees, and then when we're talking to the directors, that's when it's our opportunity to talk about diversity and making sure that all the different communities in our city do have access to programming and those types of things, and it's something that is very important to me.
Thank you, Paul. Richard?
Thank you. One of the most important goals, I think, of city government is if we're going to be serving the community, we have to help the community understand and educate them to the opportunities that are available. The communications program that has been in place for the last few years is a classic example of exceptional outreach to the community, to make sure that every segment of the community has the opportunity to have some input into the decision-making process, that they also have the ability to affect where the dollars go in terms of our prioritization, to make sure that the programs that they're asking for, in fact, are being provided, whether it be in the recreation department, whether it be extended programming through the senior citizens department. The key, in my opinion, is we have to educate. We've got a responsibility to educate, and most importantly, then listen and act on what we hear. And if we do that, and if we do that well, then we're going to accomplish that goal of diversity within the programming we provide.
Thank you. Susan?
I think diversity is a huge issue in this city. You can look here at the council, and we can, we don't see too much diversity right here. And that really goes for all the departments. I mean, I don't see much diversity. I went to talk to various people in various departments to prepare for tonight as well, and I just didn't see much diversity. So that is something that needs to be encouraged much more. Certainly, policy, if we need to change policy, we should, and encourage hiring to include diversity. When, you know, when a position is open, that really should be emphasized. So I think, yeah, that's definitely very much on my radar.
Thank you, Susan.
Janesville, I think, has done a good job, and certainly we could be doing better. The police department, the fire department, and other departments certainly hire and have become more diverse. If you go, and we have officers from all walks of life, in both the police department and the fire department, but we certainly can do better. We have always tried, and I think during budget time, we look at different programs and where we can spend different money and help that. And I think the city is doing a much better job, but there is always room for improvement, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. All right. Richard, this will be your question first. What do you see as the biggest challenges in Janesville's environmental future, and how can you address them?
I think the biggest challenges in our environmental future has to do with that whole application of a concept of sustainability. Give you an example. We recently received significant grant monies that allowed the city to purchase a number of new buses for the public transit program. Rather than shopping just for an off-the-shelf bus, literally, we made it an extra point to ensure that we were getting diesel buses, which are low-emission diesels, and they are state-of-the-art in that respect. A lot of people don't realize that the city of Janesville has been on the forefront of capturing gases coming off of our landfill facility, and we're reusing those gases to power many of our public works department vehicles. A commitment to every opportunity that you can find to be environmentally conscious and safe is something that has to be part of every decision that we make.
Thank you. Susan?
Sure. I think the biggest challenge in front of us is planning for resiliency. Janesville, luckily, thank goodness, has been quite lucky over the past few years. We had a big flood in 2008, but we've been really very lucky since then. But at some point, our luck will fail us. We can't count on that moving forward. Obviously, I fully believe in science. I fully believe that we could be facing with a real catastrophe in the future. Certainly, fire and police departments need to prepare for that, and that should be part of their budget as well.
All right. Thank you. Paul?
I guess to expand on it a little bit, you know, we've made some major investments into our water treatment center and our water supply system and our wastewater treatment. And that's one thing that we continue to look at and continue to do. And I think another part is the improvement of the health of the Rock River, and I believe that removing the dam and doing the improvements there have improved the Rock River and will continue to improve it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Paul?
The two biggest environmental challenges that I see are, number one, our recycling program. It's becoming very expensive for us to recycle. It used to be that we were paid for our recycling materials. Now we have to pay for someone to take our recycling materials. This is a result of the trade war with China and some other global forces, but we're going to have to deal with that, as a lot of communities around us are. And I think we're positioned, because of our size, to hopefully be a leader and come up with a plan on how can we take care of our recyclables here, so we don't have to cancel the program or something like that. We need to find a way to keep that program going. And then number two, many of our city buildings are very old and inefficient. A lot of the buildings that we built in the 60s, 70s, and 80s were not built to be environmentally friendly, and it's going to be expensive to replace those and hopefully bring them up to a more efficient and environmentally responsible state.
Thank you. All right. Susan, this will be your question first. What is your experience with reviewing and understanding budgets at a city level?
Well, I will start out with the fact that I have reviewed our budget, and I have spoken with city manager Freitag and Max Gagin about our budget process and so forth. So, I have a basic level of that. But I have, actually, in my past, I have experience with doing a bigger budget than just my own personal one. I have worked as a school library media specialist, and as that, I had a sizable budget, which I worked on every year. That was one of the biggest things to do. And so, I actually know a lot more than what you might suspect for a novice, actually.
All right. Thank you. Paul?
Twelve years. Been on the city council, again, finishing up my 12th year on the council, so I've had the experience of reviewing the budget each year. So.
Okay. Paul?
This was my first year doing the budget, and the budget, like I said, is almost a six-month process now. And it's an area that I think we have a chance for real improvement. I think right now, the budget is given to us in somewhat of a finished-product state. And I think at our last after-action review meeting with city staff, it was the will of the council that we want more control over that budget and more input and more time. So I think that we have a real opportunity to improve the process by hopefully giving the council members more time to work on the budget, and then in turn, give that budget to the community and get more real feedback on it. Because right now, I just, we honestly get very, very little feedback from the community on the budget, and it's something that I'd like to see us improve.
Thank you, Paul. Richard?
Thank you. It is fascinating to me that a lot of people will believe that much of our time is spent on the nuts and bolts of trying to accumulate a document that's going to tell us how many pencils and how much paper and how much gasoline we're going to buy, when the fact of the matter is, the budget is actually a policy document. It's that document that establishes what the priorities are within the city. It's that document that tells us what's our investment level going to be in our law enforcement and other public safety programs. It's that document that tells the community what our commitment is to parks and recreation, for example. It's a prioritization process of twofold, I guess. One is listening to the community and finding out what those needs are versus what the wants are. And then, two, sitting down and very carefully establishing priorities within those needs that have been articulated to us, and making sure that that policy document reflects what the community has stated they need, not necessarily what they want.
Okay. Thank you. So, Paul, you'll have this question first. What do you think the city's role is in downtown revitalization? What recommendations would you support in the future?
Well, I think the city is playing a major role in downtown revitalization with the Arise program, with partnership with Forver Janesville and others. Downtown is the heart of any city, and ours certainly possibly suffered Downtown is the heart of any city, and ours certainly possibly suffered a heart attack back a few years ago with the closing of the GM plant and, and others. So, it's really coming back. We have more to do. We're certainly getting, opening the Milwaukee Street Bridge and redesigning, Milwaukee Street is coming up, and helping businesses downtown to open up and improve businesses that are either not open now and get new businesses in downtown. We just did a, where we're allowing apartments in the upstairs on some of the storefronts, and we're helping the building owners to do that and make some money and improve the downtown. So, we do have a role there. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
I think having a dynamic downtown is going to be crucial to this city's future, because, again, if we are hoping to keep and attract our young, talented people, that is at the top of the list for young folks. I think the city's role in that is, number one, infrastructure. We need to make sure that we have first-class infrastructure in our downtown, and I think we're well on our way to doing that. One area of improvement, I think, is bicycle infrastructure. We're making strides, but I think we could do better. Number two, we need to cut red tape for new creative businesses to come to our downtown, whether that's parking restrictions, making it easier for them on that. One example is we're allowing, like, restaurants to have sandwich boards. They couldn't have sandwich boards on the sidewalks in the city of Janesville for a long time. Or outdoor seating for eating and drinking. Again, that was limited under our laws, so first-class infrastructure and cut the red tape for the businesses.
Great, thank you, Paul. Rich?
I think the most important role that the city plays is that of collaborator. Whether or not the city can, can do those things necessary to make sure that the Milwaukee Street Bridge, for example, is replaced or repaired, that the streets are repaired and replaced, that's well and good, and we do that. But we need partners to make sure that we can add the pizzazz to that mix to, to make downtown and the community as a whole a really attractive place. Our partnership with Forward Janesville, with the Arise program, the private sectors investment, which they're trying really hard to match the city's investment into those downtown improvements that are so crucial. But if you don't have a partnership and there's just one person leading the show, and you're not willing to share and work together, we wouldn't accomplish nearly what's being done today. That partnership is an outgrowth of what came forward years ago when we decided to partner on economic development with the city of Beloit, with the city of Janesville, with Rock County, with Alliant Energy, and we said, "Let's do Rock 5.0 and work together, let's collaborate." That's the success factor in this thing. We'll have success if we work together, and that's something I'm proud to say we are doing in this community.
Thank you. Susan?
Yes, I think I would echo what most, most everyone said here. The only thing I would add would be to keep more focus on developing, rehabbing some of those downtown apartments as we're doing with that graft project. That would be, that would be excellent. And the city has money available for private owners also to rehab their buildings, and I think that's definitely very positive, and that needs to continue. And I would even add, add more to that, because we do have beautiful, we do have some precious, beautiful architecture in our downtown area that does need to be preserved for the history of the United States and the history of Wisconsin and the history of Janesville. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Paul, this will be your question first. The city has obviously put a lot of effort into finding a solution for an aging ice rink right now. What are the opportunities and challenges of the current proposal for the sports complex?
Sure. So I've been on the steering committee for the indoor sports complex for a little over two years now, so before I got on the council. There's a lot of momentum in our community for this project. Overwhelmingly, the feedback that I hear is, is positive. A couple of the challenges that we have is, how are we going to pay for this thing? There was a price tag thrown out there of $33 million. I'm not sure if that's an accurate number or not, but that's a, that was, I'd like to point out that that's an estimate. But still, how are we going to pay for this responsibly to minimize the impact for the taxpayer? And then, number two, where are we going to put it? City staff is negotiating with the ownership group from the mall right now, and we got to make sure that that deal makes sense for the city so that the taxpayers aren't taking a whole bunch of risk that they didn't bargain for. So how are we going to pay for it, and where are we going to put it? Opportunities, I think that there is a huge hole in this city for kids in the winter. There's not much to do in this town for kids in the winter, and this would be a way that we could keep families and kids here rather than having to drive to Madison or Rockford every weekend or in the winter.
All right, thank you, Paul. Richard?
Thank you. Probably the biggest challenge with the indoor sports complex that I've, I've been struggling with is we haven't really truly defined what it's going to be, where it's going to be, and how it's going to be paid for. It goes back to a conversation that has to start at the very beginning. Let's figure out who our partners are. Let's figure out ways that we can collaborate, and, and we're beginning that process. There's now a fundraising committee that's been established, and, and they're working within some parameters that have been established, so they have a target at least in terms of how, how their level of financial participation is going to be there. We have a difficult issue to wrestle with, and that is to finally decide, is it going to be two sheets of ice? Is it going to be three separate entities? What is it going to be? When we can do that, then we can make those decisions about where's the best place to locate it. I concur with Paul completely that we've got a void of opportunities for young people, particularly in the winter months. This is an exciting venture, but we really need, for the sake of the taxpayer, to have some specificity in what we're expecting them to, what, as it comes, as it comes to paying the bill for this new project.
Thank you. Susan?
Yes, I just want to echo what the other members have said in terms of this project. I think it's a very exciting project. I think it's essential for our young people, not only to have activities, but to have opportunities for their future as well. So that's very important. The, the challenges are to figure out what, what we want, what it is, and where it will be, and, and definitely how to, how to pay for it. But definitely, we need, we need something to happen, so...
Thank you, Susan. Paul?
Well, again, I'll just reiterate, if, if money was no object, there'd be no problem, but money is, is a problem. We have no idea the cost of this yet. It keeps changing, the different studies that the council has seen, you know, it's been anywhere from, I think, a low of 20 million to 35. We were told at one time that the investors might be able to come up with half, and we still don't know there. So it's, it's going to be difficult, we're, we're going to have to see who steps forward and with how much, and what the bottom line is, what the taxpayers can afford. And, you know, we were told at one time, unless that changes, that the taxpayers might be able to afford maybe 10 million. If the number is way over that, I'm going to have a problem with it, but we're still in the early stages. And, again, until we get hardback numbers on how much is coming in from the private sector and how much is have to go out from, from the public, I won't be able to make a decision until I have those numbers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Richard, this will be your question first. There's considerable, considerable community concern surrounding people who are experiencing homelessness and a lack of affordable housing in Janesville. How can the city council address these issues?
Let me address the affordable housing issue first. That's an issue that the city isn't positioned financially to make the investments necessary to crack that nut, as, as it were. Through the Community Development Authority, the city has made it a priority. With the creative use of our tax increment financing districts and the serenade that we're receiving here in the back, with, with the effective use of our, our tax increment financing districts, we're able to provide an additional source of funds that makes projects like the River Flats complex a possible, something that in the past has not been a possible. And frankly, that goes back to one of those things that's really important, it's called collaboration. The homeless issue, the best thing that the city can do for the homeless issue is work very hard to bring the partners to the table to address the issue. The partners in this case are, are not just the city alone, it's the, it's the county of Rock, it's the network of not-for-profit agencies that work in the human services arena, whose real mission, whose real job is to deal with that particular population. The city can deal with it from a public safety perspective and deal with it exceptionally well. We don't have the talent, we don't have the skills, we don't have the positions to take it on from a human services perspective, which is why we need partners. And from the time this has been a discussion item to today, I have strongly urged the city to, to spread the wealth, as it were. Get involved and bring in some people who do have expertise so that we can do something meaningful in that particular arena.
Okay. Susan, you can go ahead and take a little longer on this question as well.
Okay, great. Well, we are moving forward with affordable housing, and that is good news. However, we still have a real problem with homelessness. I participated in the January 22 count, so I saw firsthand, you know, what, what's what. And I've also toured House of Mercy, and I interviewed Jessica Loker, I've spoken with her, I've toured the Gifts Shelter and so forth, but we, we really, we still have a great, great need with homelessness. And I think what I would like to see is to open up more options. I, I don't really quite understand why the tiny homes were rejected, if, I mean, location might have been the thing, but then find another location. We, we still have to work on that. And tiny homes really is an option that many other cities have found to be a really good solution. Madison, for example, Racine, et cetera.
All right, thank you. Paul?
Homelessness is not just a Janesville problem, it's a national problem. There are some cities that, you know, it's just overwhelming. We do have a homeless problem in Janesville. One of the proposals was the tiny homes. But if you do the research on the tiny homes, and I believe that the one is in Kenosha, it's actually, the tiny homes are on a, a campus that not, not only do the people have a place to stay at night, but then they can go into this building that also provides them with showers and services from the county, so they have more things available instead of just building several little tiny houses on a lot and not providing them with the services. So, and the services through the state of Wisconsin, those type of social services are really provided through the county. And that's one thing that we are trying to get our city to more work with the county to provide those services to the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
I think the city's role in addressing homelessness and affordable housing is complicated. We have a very limited budget, and we have to find out, how can we address these things with the limited resources that we have, like Council President Gruber mentioned? One thing I think we can do is continue the safe parking program at the Jackson Street Lot. I think it's been a big success to give a safe place for these folks who are transitionally homeless to have a place to park. So I'd like to see us continue that program at the Jackson Street Parking Lot. Number two is I think we need to continue our community policing approach, where instead of arresting these folks, our police officers have really focused on giving them resources. So giving them, they all carry now these informational cards in their squad cars, where they can give homeless people places to go and where to get food and that kind of thing, and shelters in the cold. So I think continuing those two programs will be the best ways that we can address those problems.
Thank you. All right, Susan, this will be your question first. With regard to housing code violations, what changes can be made to improve compliance by property owners to the Janesville Housing Code?
Well, this is something I'm not that much up on, so I would have to do some research on this in terms of what our codes are. I mean, I know, well, anyway, I'm, I'm not sure how to answer that question.
That's okay. Paul?
We just did some updating on the housing code, and basically, our housing codes follow state and federal law. There are certain things that we certainly can't have a building code that is less than what state building codes are, so... But we have done some updates and brought those codes up to, up to, up to code, up to, for lack of a better term. So we, we are doing everything that we can. There's, again, in some cases, your hands are tied because you're covered by, by other laws above you, state laws, if I have you, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Paul?
Could you repeat the question?
Of course. With regard to housing code violations, what changes can be made to improve compliance by property owners to the Janesville Housing Code?
Sure. So compliance to the housing code is challenging because we have minimal enforcement. The city relies, we're on a complaint-based system. We do not have a full-time person dedicated trying to find violations. However, over the last couple of years, we did dedicate some city staff to give attention to our main corridors coming into the city. So Racine Street by Palmer Park, Milton Avenue, and they gave extra attention to those neighborhoods and made sure that people who had, you know, grass and weeds that were three feet tall, that they got cut, or if their house was falling down, that they had to do something about it. So I would like to see us start that program again, especially in those main corridors, or if we know that there's some real problem areas, I would like to see us dedicate one city staff person to take care of that rather than relying on neighbors telling on each other.
Thank you. Richard?
Thank you. And we're very fortunate, because the Community Development Authority was, in their infinite wisdom, able to push forward a proposal that got us a housing specialist position within our neighborhood development department, whose singular job is to go out and to work with landlords, identify those particular properties that are substandard or not meeting our codes, and find ways to try and remediate those particular situations. That has been a, a success. Unfortunately, there's a greater demand for that service than there is resource available. It would be nice to have a couple of people who could go out and, and fulfill that role. Nonetheless, we are making a financial commitment to address the problem. The solution, if there is such a thing, is a better level of education among landlords and tenants and the city as to what the codes and responsibilities are, and then providing some of those tools, such as revolving loan funds and, and other community development block grant-sponsored programs that can help bring those properties up to a standard where it is healthful and safe living for, for renters in our community.
Thank you. Paul, I see you have the microphone ready? So what is your view of regionalization and collaboration arrangements with adjoining cities? Some example are fire, law enforcement, education?
Well, again, with our, our budget getting harder and harder to balance, we certainly are doing that. We're doing that with the fire department right now. Of course, we have, our fire chief is not only our fire chief, but he's Milton's fire chief, and other things that we are doing, even buying equipment. Our fire department, when they just replaced, I believe, two years ago, a new fire truck or ambulance, they went with a, another local municipality that was also buying an ambulance. So, we could go to the, the city could go to the supplier of the, of the ambulance and get a deal, because instead of just buying one, we're actually buying two together and going with the other municipality. So, it's best to try and do that, and we've been doing it with Beloit and Milton and Edgerton and all different surrounding areas, so we'll continue.
Great, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I agree, these partnerships are great when they make sense for the residents of the city of Janesville. I guess, make no mistake, if elected, I'm going to represent the citizens of this city. But, with that said, I don't view us as in a competition with other municipalities. I think that in this region, we're all on the same side. So if we can find ways to combine resources and save money and get a better result for the citizens of Janesville, then I'm in favor of it. One good example of that is the fire department. So Chief Rhodes is now the, I guess, kind of, you know, the chief of Milton, but in addition to that, we provide emergency transports for much of northern Rock County, and that's actually... And that's actually, it saves them money because they don't have to operate an ambulance service. And it's an additional revenue stream for the city of Janesville because our ambulances, they're out there doing work rather than sitting in the garage. So I would look for more opportunities like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. At all levels, I've been a proponent of cooperative services between municipalities within Rock County. Whether that be joint purchasing of goods, commodities, and services that every municipality needs so that you can get, take advantage of volume purchases. Whether it be jointly bidding out contracts for road repair, for asphalt, for the like, for fuel and other commodities. Cooperative working together means we'll share savings and we'll share the opportunity to, excuse me, do a better job on behalf of the taxpayer and stretch our dollars farther. It's a good thing and it's a bad thing because we are under intense pressure as a municipality, as is other municipalities, to try and balance that budget. That compels us to have to work together. And if we can demonstrate in areas beyond just fire, which is an incredible collaborative effort between Milton and Janesville and spreading across the county, if we can do that in a much broader spectrum, we're into, I think, a success area that will be of a big savings for the taxpaying public.
Thank you. Susan?
Yes, definitely. Cooperation, forming partnerships, and collaborating with one another are all things that will help, help the city of Janesville. I mean, we do have a tight budget, and I think this proposal with Milton Fire Department, yes, that is definitely a positive move. So.
Thank you. All right. Richard, this will be, actually, pardon me, Paul, this is your question first. So we're going to have time for two more questions before your closing statement. So this is the second to last question. What makes you the most excited about Janesville's next five years?
Completing the Arise Project downtown. I think when people get to see the final finished project, I think people are going to be really, really excited. And I think we're going to have a gathering place for the city. And I think we're going to have a vibrant downtown that'll help us attract and keep young families. The other thing is this indoor sports complex. I think that has a chance to be a real game changer for our community. Some of the studies have shown that we could be bringing, by some estimates, if we're bringing in 30 regional and national tournaments a year, we're going to be bringing in tens of thousands, maybe even over 100,000 people to our community every year who are going to be spending money on hotels and restaurants here and helping, helping lift up our local economy.
Thank you. Richard?
I think the most exciting thing about Janesville right now is the fact that we're a city under construction. I can remember when I first came on the city council, giving a tour to a handful of people, and they said, when are you going to start repairing the roads? When are you going to start doing the bridges again? When are you going to start reinvesting in the community? I take that same tour with people today, and they go, when are you going to get that done? By golly, we want to make sure that we can enjoy this in our lifetime. And the fact of the matter is, we are making progress, and it's a city under construction. To me, it's exciting to see the plans that have been in place for a number of years finally coming to fruition. And as I see those cranes up there, that tells me that's progress. For the next five years or so, that's the type of progress I want to see in this community.
Thank you. Susan?
The most really exciting thing for me is to see the increased community development in terms of collaboration, cooperation, and agencies working together with governmental entities and with one another. And I think that will continue in the future. So that's, otherwise, I would definitely echo what everyone else is saying, but to say something a little bit different, that would be something I'm very excited about.
Thank you. Paul?
I think being a lifelong resident of Janesville, I think one of the most exciting things for me is to see the redevelopment of the GM project. You know, my grandfather worked there as a janitor in the twenties, thirties. And everybody would say at times, you know, the GM plant, you know, that's never going to close. And then it got to be, well, the GM plant's going to close. Oh, no, it's not going to. And never did I think that I would see where it'd be vacant and tore down. I have high hopes for CDC. They've redeveloped other projects around the nation like this. So I think it's going to be very exciting to see what projects they're going to have there on that site.
Great. Thank you. Richard, this will be your question first. Is there a topic that we have not covered tonight that you would like to address?
Is there a topic tonight that we haven't addressed that I would like to address?
That you want to address, yes.
I want to address. I think the topic that is something that is my theme going forward and has been my theme for years is the fact that this is a community that's successful by virtue of us collaborating, by virtue of us working together, by virtue of us listening, and then taking that information that we've gained, that knowledge that we've obtained, and translating that into working plans that result in good, positive direction for the community. I'm excited for the next five years. I'm excited for the next 10 years because plans that started in this community 15 years ago are finally coming to fruition. And they're a product of a listening process and of a doing process that involves everyone in the community. And the more we can bring people to the forefront and involve them in that decision-making, priority-setting process, the greater, the more important, the more successful those ventures going forward are going to be. So that's something we haven't talked about nearly enough.
All right. Susan?
Well, the people who are currently on the council have painted a very bright picture, and for sure, we are definitely improving and developing, yes. However, the one thing that we really haven't discussed, and sufficiently, I believe, are some of the things that we really should be working on that we haven't been working on. For example, increasing our diversity within the city, within all the hires, and, and obviously with the council. So I think that would be the thing I think we really should be talking about is the things that we really need to do better.
Thank you.
I think you've covered quite a good variety of questions. I can't really think of anything at this time, and I think that you should have covered that you didn't. Appreciate the forum.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, one real challenge we're going to have moving forward is our, our street program, our, our street improvement program. Again, right now, we're doing 12 miles a year. The cost of inflation is going up eight or 10% a year. So unless we make changes, next year, we're not going to be able to afford to do 12 miles. And we have 330 miles of roads in this city. And we really, I mean, by the State Department of Transportation recommendations, we should be doing maybe 15 or 18 miles of roads per year. So we need to figure out a way to either reduce that cost or find out another way to pay for it that makes sense for the taxpayer. Because I don't think an option is to go back to how it used to be where our streets are covered in potholes like Council President Gruber was talking about. So I think that's going to be a big issue in 2020 and 2021 because at current forecast, the road construction program is going to swallow our entire capital budget in like three years.
Thank you. So now we've come to the end of the question and answer portion of the program. And candidates will now have two minutes each for a closing statement. And it's like Susan, you are the first to close. Okay.
Well, again, I do want to thank the League of Women Voters and Forward Janesville for hosting this forum. This, obviously, we've all presented a lot of information for you, so you will definitely make a wise decision when you go vote. So thank you again. So I want to really emphasize the point that if, you know, I am new, but I'm a quick study. I work hard. I will approach this as a full-time job because I don't work right now, so I have that time. And I have the, you know, willingness to do that. And that's the, you know, I work with zeal, and I work with a lot of different people. I reach out for answers and listen. So I can say that obviously up here, we are all good people, we are all qualified. But we have mentioned differences among us, and so that's kind of what you need to think about. I would definitely be a vote for change. My perspective is new and fresh, even though I'm an older person. I have a very different viewpoint than the other gentlemen sitting up here. And I hope that you really vote for me. I need your votes. And, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Paul?
I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters, JATV, and Forward Janesville for putting on this forum. They've always been a good information place for people, voters, to find out what's happening and who the different candidates are. And I appreciate them doing it for the years that they've been doing it. Again, I'm finishing up 12 years on the council. I'd like to give another two years because I think we have some exciting things coming up in the next two years. And I'd like to be part of that. So I'd appreciate your vote on April 7. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to Forward Janesville for hosting this forum. I was born and raised in Janesville. I love the city. I'm passionate about the city. I was fortunate enough to move away for 10 years. I lived in Phoenix, Arizona for about 10 years where I attended law school. And it made me really, really appreciate the community that I grew up in. I think I took it for granted before I came back. And I think coming back to the city in 2017 to raise my family was the best decision I ever could have made. And I think it also gave me a fresh perspective because I see Janesville as a lifelong resident, but also as a newcomer. And I can, I think, bring that perspective to council. Number two, again, I think I can be a voice for young families in the community on the council that are raising young kids in the 2020s. I have a, I have two boys. I have a three-year-old and a almost one-year-old. So the challenges that are going to face my family, that are facing many families in this city, I can be a voice for those families on the council. My main priority is to make Janesville the most livable city that we can be. I think the things that we need to focus on, or at least that the city government can focus on, is public safety. This is a really safe place to live, and I think we need to keep focusing on that. So that's investing in our police department. Number two, I think we need to protect our parks. The parks here, we shouldn't take them for granted. Living in different parts of the country, we have such an amazing park system. I think people who, who maybe have lived here their whole lives maybe don't realize how good we have it. So I hope we can continue to invest and protect those parks. Third, we need to make sure we have first-class infrastructure. And I think the biggest piece of that moving forward is going to be our roads and this indoor sports complex, which I do consider part of our infrastructure. If we can find a way to pay for that and fill that gap in the winter for our families so that we can really raise the quality of life for families in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Thank you to the League and to Forward Janesville for hosting the forum. And even more importantly, thank you to the citizens of Janesville who have put their trust in me for the last five years to represent their interests. I am humbled by the trust that you've placed in me. And I hope that as you look at my track record, you'll come to a conclusion that it's been a good investment. It's report card time. And you'll cast your report card for me or someone else on April 7, and I hope that you do. I really believe that this is a great community. It's a community that I've lived in longer than I have in any other community in my lifetime. And it's one that when I first got here, I said, I like this place. And as I've been here longer and longer, I love this place. And I've been committed to making sure the quality of life here is as exceptional as it possibly can be. I'm excited about the future. We're under construction. There's a lot of really exciting things on the forefront. Our best years are ahead of us, quite honestly. The plans that have been laid are now being well-executed, and we're making progress. We've had to experiment a bit, and we've had some successes with those experiments. I look to how we've creatively implemented our tax increment financing district strategy that's not only helped economic development, but by golly, it's helped fund some of the affordable housing programs that are important to us. I intend to be proposing a roads funding mechanism as we approach the next year, a transportation improvement district concept that's been tried in other communities in this state, that'll give us a more sustainable ability to fund the road program that Paul speaks so eloquently about. And he's exactly on target. Unless we find new and creative and innovative ways to address the problems that we have in that arena, we're going to find ourselves in a lot of, a lot of trouble. I think with some creative approaches, including that transportation improvement district concept, we can address that solidly and make sure that this is the community of choice for people all across the region. We're blessed with so many natural attributes. Our park system is phenomenal. And there's a can-do spirit among the people here that I find just incredibly exceptional. I'm very humbled that you let me be a part of that, and I hope that you would support me in my efforts to make sure we stay on the course of progress for Janesville.
All right. Thank you. That is the end of our program tonight. I'd like to thank the four candidates who are running for city council. We appreciate that you're willing to serve. It's how democracy works. I'd also like to thank Forward Janesville once again and JATV. We couldn't do this without the cooperation of our partners. I'd also like to thank the people who came out tonight to sit in the audience. I also want to thank the people sitting at home. And thank you for educating yourselves to make this democracy work for all of us. The spring election for the Janesville City Council will be held on Tuesday, April 7. There will be three open seats. I'd like to thank you very much for washing and have a wonderful evening. Thank you.